Vote for the public hearing?
One.
Do you want to take one of them to say it again?
No.
Second?
Need a second?
Second.
Minute, Carol?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, roll call vote.
Aye.
Excuse me. Trusty Moore.
Aye.
Trusty Ma.
Aye.
Trusty Treadwell. All right, here we go. Uh, local law one. For the year 2015. Local law amending chapter 112, vehicle and traffic, and article two, traffic regulations of the village code of the village of Rousas Point. The local laws available for inspection at the village office during normal visit hours. And that is to allow marinas to travel on village streets. Anybody wants to address the board about it?
Is that prohibited now?
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, it's...
No. No.
They can use them, we just had to put it in local law form.
Yeah, whatever. I'm not involved in it, so I don't know what's all I know is...
Who is involved?
Who's involved with...
With local law number one. He said he's not involved, I guess he doesn't...
Well, the board is involved.
The board is involved in it.
Well, what is this? Is this a change from something previous?
Yes.
And what was the previous?
Carol, please.
It was in the... Back a few months ago, the board approved, I believe it was in April, to allow the marina owners to use their boats back and forth from their like down on Lake Street, Safer Gains, and be able to bring their boats over to where he does his work on them. And they wanted to put it in local law form. So we're having it put... It was approved back then that they could do it, and now it's in local law form.
Right, thank you, Carol.
But it was approved, and there was no reason... They'd been doing it right along.
No, okay.
There were questions that had come up, so they put it in local law form. They're addressing it.
Just curious.
Anybody else? If not, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to second it. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, mayor. Carry now, I need a motion to adopt it.
Make a motion to adopt the local law?
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore. Another roll call vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trusty Ma.
Aye.
Trusty Treadwell.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. All right, that is number one. Number two, need a motion to open public hearing. Local law two of the year amending chapter 121, planning board. And that's meetings and times.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Roll call vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty Moore.
Aye.
Trusty Ma.
Aye.
Trusty Treadwell.
Aye.
Anybody want to address the board on it? Public hearing is open.
Carol, would you like to explain what this is?
Uh, what that is, is that in the code, it addressed the time and day that the meetings would be held for the planning board. And the planning board asked if they could move their meetings back to like six o'clock. And having it taken out of there allows them on an annual basis, if they need to change the day or the time of a meeting, they can do so without having it in there for a specific time and date.
Okay.
So that would just allow them to do that.
Would this allow them, like if somebody come to the village, I come to the board and like there was a process of getting something approved, they could have a meeting quicker?
Oh, they can anyways. They can do that. These are scheduled for a year.
Perfect, yep.
Yeah. This way here, they can just... They don't have... They're not committed to that seven o'clock on the fourth Monday of each month. If they decide next year when they do their meeting, the organizational meeting, that they want to have it on a Wednesday night at six. They can change it without having to go to...
Any other discussion? If not, need a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore. That don't need a roll call vote, does it, Carol?
It's the point is now... You don't need it to close, no.
Oh, to close it? Oh, okay.
You didn't need it to open it, but you need it. I have...
All right. Motion made, seconded, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, vote by your usual side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, and need a motion to adopt it.
Motion to adopt local law number two of amending chapter 121, planning board meeting schedule?
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore. Now?
Yes.
Roll call vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty Moore.
Aye.
Trusty Ma.
Aye.
Trusty Treadwell.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, and that is Carol. All right, open a meeting to the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board, may they so.
I would like to address the board on an old issue. Uh, I have a letter that I have given to each of the trustees and to the village administrator. I would give one to Mr. Sterling if he came, but he didn't, he's not here. It's from my wife and I, on Nine Edge Water Drive. On September 2nd of 2014, we came before the board to request your assistance in solving a very dangerous situation which threatens us. We as taxpayers sought protection from this situation under chapter 90 of the Uniform Code of Rousas Point titled Property Management, or Maintenance, rather. As appointed and elected village officials, you have allowed the violation of three deadlines to pass to guard our safety. We were assured by Ms. LaBumbar that some sort of remedy would take place on May 31st, 2015. We came here on July 20th, 2015, to note the violation of the date. A new date was set for August 31st, 2015. That deadline was also not met. The third deadline was issued by us to the village in order to force closure of this situation so that we do not have to go through another winter with this threat hanging over our heads. We, as me and my wife, lack the authority to direct the correction of this problem. The village has the authority to correct this problem, but for whatever reason chooses not to. The village has subjected us to distress and confusion as to why nothing has been done to directly solve this problem. Your own letter, which was commissioned through Mayor George Rivers and written by Peter Landau, a tree expert from Northeast Agricultural Associates, stipulates that if nothing is done, the occupants of nine and eleven Edge Water Drive could suffer property damage and/or a serious injury if this tree were fallen. Therefore, we allege that the addresses of this letter are guilty of nonfeasance, a legal term which is failure to perform an act which is required by law, the enforcement of your own regulation. We also allege malfeasance, which is wrongdoing by your own code regulation. The reason for alleging malfeasance is the failure by omission to act. Please consider this a formal notice that we feel you have violated chapter 90 of your own village code. This violation can very well make each of you personally liable and culpable for not executing your duties as a public elected slash appointed official of the local government. Thank you.
Jean, you got any comments?
Uh, the only comment that I have is that the board is acting on the direction of our attorney, Tom Murnane. And he submitted a letter June 22nd to both the Merchant family and the Roberts family. And that is the direction we have taken.
May I say something?
Sure.
My letter said almost absolutely nothing from Mr. Murnane. As far as I'm concerned, it is not a position statement. You are still culpable through your elective duties. And Jean is responsible as the administrator to direct your employee, Mr. Sterling, to enforce the code. Mr. Sterling is never here. I have tried to contact Mr. Sterling, but face to face. I can never find him. Is he still your employee?
He's on his way back, I believe, from New York City.
Is he still your employee?
Yes, he is.
Okay, I have been told that that is a possibility, that he is not going to be. And as I told somebody, I believe what I see, not what I hear. I get no action out of him to enforce, through the regulation, my protection. This is incorrect, it is not right, and I am at the end of my rope. The only reason I wrote this letter is if this falls, somebody is culpable. Because I cannot get Mr. Sterling to do his job. I do not feel that Ms. LaBumbar has done her job, and that's about it for me.
What did our lawyer say to do, Jean? Did he say to keep him contacted?
Um, I have been requested by the village board of the village of Rousas Point to write to you about the tree issue that exists on your neighboring property. This is addressed to Mr. Merchant at 11 Edge Water Drive, village of Rousas Point. Pursuant to chapter 90, property maintenance of the village code for the village of Rousas Point, it is the property owner's responsibility to maintain trees located on their own property. Accordingly, it is Ms. Roberts' responsibility to maintain and prune the tree on her property. I will be writing to Ms. Roberts to remind her of this duty. You have referred to section 90-9 of the village code which concerns emergency situations in forens. The village board has received and reviewed the report of Northeast Agricultural Associates dated December 29, 2014. Although the report does recommend some action be taken to address the tree in question, same does not indicate that the tree constitutes an emergency situation, again in quotes. Accordingly, at this time, the village will take no action regarding the subject tree.
Yes, I... I'm sorry.
Will, however, continue to require Ms. Roberts to comply with the requirements of the village code and to take the necessary action regarding this tree. If you should have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Jean has been contacted many times.
And nothing has been done, and the only way to force the issue is to have your code enforcement person do his blasted job.
What would that be?
That would be compel her to do what it said in the letter from the arboriculturist. You people made me get a letter from a tree expert. I did that. You told me the letter was no good. The citing that Mr. Murnane puts in there is done by your guy, and he cited the wrong thing. And if you can't see that, I suggest that maybe you read your own code. I have the code in my hand. I'm not going to read it to you. But I am telling you, if something doesn't change and this falls, somebody is culpable. And I say it's the village for not doing their job.
According to Tom Murnane, we are. She's contacted Ms. Roberts about it.
Doesn't make any difference. These people here in this place said it was a civil issue. They wanted me to sue her. I have sought my protection under this code. I have been denied it. That's the bottom line. And so, if you... He is your employee, Mr. Murnane is. I would expect him to spin it the way it would be to your benefit. If I am forced to go to a lawyer, which I don't want to do, I just want my protection under the code. If I am forced to go, you're going to have to explain to them that you think that that is a viable position. Fine with me. I don't really care, and you probably don't either.
It's from our lawyer, again.
Well, how many times has Ms. Roberts been...
Ms. Roberts has been contacted twice and promised to do something. She has done nothing. So if she continues to do nothing, and the village is going to continue to compel her, when? How? Come on! That's ridiculous.
Sorry, ma'am.
No, anyways, you have your opinions, I have mine. That's the way it is.
Let's go.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else? Nobody at this time. Minutes of the previous meetings of September 8th and September 9th.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th and the special meeting of September 9th?
I'll get that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bill, board, do you all have copies? Are sent any additions?
No.
Thank you.
Make a motion to pay the bill?
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Any... Any discussion?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Do you go up to bid? Do you get any second bids on this gas pump from Church Oil for $9,000, or do we just buy this? Says Church Oil, uh, gas, gas pump with keys for $9,300.
See, Brian, I don't know if you went out for it. Did you go out and get a quote?
I didn't know anything about it.
The gas pump?
No, I just see it in the shop. I didn't know if you gave the okay to...
Didn't know nothing about it either.
I know it's budgeted, that I don't.
It's in the budget. Well, it can be budgeted, that's fine.
No, I'm just saying it was...
You know, did it go out for a bid? It seems like a pretty sizable... You know, if that was a pump or something for the water plant, it would certainly go out for a bid. Just to buy something like this, just... I don't know, it just seems excessive. I buy gas pumps all the time, and they don't seem to be that much money.
Well, that's what the key thing on top of it...
Is that the one for the fire department?
No, for all of the departments.
Yeah, the one that's...
Wait, wait, next to it.
Diesel one where we filled, yes.
Brian, who would have... Who would have... Who would have signed for that? Who would have given priority? Would that have been John? That did that? Okay, that's his position, okay.
I only checked around for diesel one. We got that, and it was... When we got it from one or the other. So this would have been looked into last year, and then it would have been budgeted for this year, is what you're thinking?
I'm thinking because I was in the budget for the price.
All right, I just didn't...
I would think.
I guess that answers my question.
We budgeted the diesel pump two years ago. We received it last year from Holbert Brothers. And apparently, I asked the question of Church Oil, and they said that they are the distributor of that unit because Holbert Brothers had such a hard time.
You know, John Ellsworth and Murnane, and they sell all kinds of petroleum equipment. Carl Smith can give pumps like this. That's got a key system on it, but it isn't anything more than a fancy switch.
Any other discussion? Need a motion, pay the bills? I did?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. No other discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, correspondence?
I have only one item that came in today. Dear Mayor Rivers, thank you for setting us up in the I E E P program for upgraded lighting for the print shop. We're pleased to have energy-efficient lighting that certainly brightens each room up. Respectfully yours, from Jim Rochester, Lynn Cody, and Dan Rochester at Border Press.
I'm writing. Report of the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on my agenda is to surplus that Crown Vic car that the fire department was using. The repairs are... The car's only worth $1,900. The repairs are $1,200. So I need a motion...
Motion first, let's have it.
Second. Moved by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Martin. Any discussion?
And would you be going to put a minimum bid on it? I mean, if it goes for 50 bucks, we can cut it up for training behind the fire department.
Whatever. Whatever they decide to do with it.
You want to put a minimum bid behind the fire department?
Aye.
I don't know. I mean, I don't... Just asking the rest of the impact, you don't know.
If you send it to scrap, you're not going to get nothing for that sent one there, I don't know, six weeks ago. It's got 60 bucks worth. So you're not going to get much of the scrap.
Just put it out there for bid and see what happens. We don't have to accept it.
Sure. Good idea.
All right, second thing on the agenda is discussion on the New York Municipal Power Agency Semiannual Meeting, which will be held in Syracuse October 20th at 9:30 a.m. Is there anybody interested in going?
What is that date?
October 28th.
Date's on the record.
I definitely will go because I do believe it's important.
I'm natural. I'm natural, I'm a...
Make a motion to allow two people to go there?
Thank you. Make a motion to allow two people. Second. Moved by trustee Treadwell, seconded by trustee Martin. Any discussion? There being...
It's on Wednesday.
It's Wednesday?
Yeah, you'd have to go down on the 27th. Because it starts at 9:30, unless you want to leave. It's pretty annoying. Okay, motion made, seconded, any discussion? Any in all in favor, use your usual side of eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Last thing on my agenda is discussion on the annual NEUA annual meeting, which, uh... Sure. Eric Noller and myself attended in Lake Placid. And if you're wondering what NEUA does for you, a surprise to everybody in that meeting was that they... The executive board met with the power authority of the state of New York. Right, along with, uh, there's another group from Long Island. Their board. And they have come up that the power authority has agreed to them, and they passed a resolution Friday on it to extend our hydro contract for another 15 years. So instead of running out 2025, it will run out 2040, which is a good thing, super thing. So, uh, all depends on whether the governor signs it. You know there's going to be a lot of pressure because it's 40 municipals that will be screaming. And there was a lot of other good things that were brought up. There was excellent demonstration on high-line safety and grounding. Excellent. Regan and Dagan, it was the name before. I don't know what they are now. They changed their name out of Asable Forks. Put on this demonstration. And it's amazing about grounding towers at high voltage. You know, what you think is grounded, is grounded. And what else? That would be a... Oh, uh... National Grid settlement. It doesn't affect us because we're not in the national grid circuit, but it affects a good many of them. They, uh, the closing of Dunkirk Coal Plant in Dunkirk, New York. National Grid tried to pass on that closing to their customers. And you're talking millions of dollars. And the court ruled in favor of the municipals. And they have to pay back millions of dollars. They can't, they set it with an illegal charge. Other than that, it was a good meeting, good meeting. A lot of meeting people that I knew. Eric got to meet a few. And that's it for me. Brad, trustee Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Little bit on the Dog Park. Um, we are still looking into the Dog Park. We did get, uh, ideas. Where did these ideas come from, Carol?
The insurance company.
Insurance company.
The insurance company. Um, so we are currently, at present time, going through, making sure everything on the list is good enough. Uh, so at this time, we're not going to vote on it. Uh, we're just going to weigh the situation and what we have in front of us. Next thing that I have, uh, request for two substitute crossing guards. Put that into a form of a motion to allow substitute Cindy Robert and Angela Robert for subs for crossing guard duty.
Okay. I'll make the motion. Tell if you want to vote. Do you have your segments? Yep, well...
Moved by trustee Treadwell, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual side of eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Um, also a couple of things that's not on the agenda, which I ended up getting tonight. Friends of the stage, they're getting a lot of benefit out of the clothing bins that are out here. And the guy that owns the clothing bins, that tells the contractor to come by and pick them up, um, sees how they've been so full and overflowing. He's actually requesting, uh, that we put a third out there. And that would help alleviate some of the mess with everybody just overstocking and overflowing. Um, so I'm bringing that up to the board for the possibility of putting a third out there.
Brad, does that then accept mattresses?
No, it does not accept mattresses. Uh, one thing from the public, reading the notices that's out there, it tells you what is acceptable for it.
I went by the other day, there was a mattress out there.
Yeah, that shouldn't be. And this is a good thing for the friends of the stage here. Doing good and making extra money to bring extra things into the village. Don't screw it up. Um, so, I want to know if it's okay with the board. Cody, if you think there's enough room out there for a third bin?
Yeah, it should be fine. I just, my only maybe recommendation is if we can advertise somewhere the things that are allowed. Because I mean, we've picked up everything from broken kids' toys to a box spring and mattress, to boxes of books.
Does clothing and shoes, I think.
It does. But I mean, I didn't know if we could post it somewhere else, maybe.
We could probably put it right in the, uh, on the light bulbs? No? Just drop off that stuff, that's it? Nothing else?
Could do that.
Does it notice part?
Take a look at that. I might be able to post it more clearly.
You can put it on the website. You can do a little article on it.
Put it right on the sign.
Because people are all over dropping it.
Sure.
It might be right. You put that to a...
I'll second that. Do you need a motion on that, Brad?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to allow for a third.
Okay. And I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you should sign aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Uh, and it was also brought to my attention, uh, getting one of the dug, uh, one of the dugouts, uh, painted in memory of Glenn Gerson, um, I guess he was one of the, uh, coaches. And, uh, they want to dedicate one of the, see if they can get one of the dugouts dedicated to him, and they want to put a plaque, because he, did a lot of work. So, uh, put that into a form of a motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? Need no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you should sign aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Uh, next thing, uh, the fire truck, uh, that we're looking into from the fire department ended up following through with the meeting, uh, with the representative that they had down there. Um, looks like it's going to be in another couple of weeks. Um, we did have it approved for us to go down. Uh, do I need to get that approved again?
No, it's been approved.
Okay, so I just, uh, giving you some information, we're still working on getting together with the representative, uh, so we can get down there and see about the fire truck, and then I'll have more information on that later. So that's rescheduled. Uh, another thing which was brought to my attention, uh, we only have one person currently, for the village employees that holds a CPR card. Don't know if it's something, just an informative, get with Walt Mearum, if you guys get a chance, get your CPR cards. And the last thing.
Can we, can we set up a, a time, so I mean?
Uh, it's all right with Walt, I don't know whether or not he's available for it.
Yeah, but I mean, is there a way we can, like, most of the village employees can do? I, I do that with my guys, we have a guy come in.
You'll do it again, John.
Yeah, who?
Maybe just something to think about, maybe?
Yeah, he's pretty flexible with it.
Problem is, there's never a good time, especially this time here for the road crew and [inaudible].
Well, the guys are busy.
Yeah, one time it's going to be problems, no, so, but we got to try to come up with a time.
Well, that's up to the department heads.
Okay.
I think that's straight up to the department heads, just putting the information out there. Um, also a request of executive session, everybody knows how I love executive sessions, but this one is to discuss the civic center personnel.
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore, roll call vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma, uh, trustee Treadwell. And the mayor votes.
And, um, we've had a couple of V M S calls, which I, um, must say, I do enjoy, well, with the police department that we have, they've actually come in handy on these last couple of calls. So I just want to put that out there. Not usually all that often, I took people's horn, but want to thank the guys for it. Um, we need them, and they do more than just go out there and try to get tickets. And that's it.
Thank you, uh, trustee Martin, trustee Moore.
I have nothing.
Thank you, trustee Moore, trustee Ma.
I have nothing.
Thank you, trustee Ma, trustee Treadwell.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Treadwell.
Brad, Brad's going one week. Executive session tonight.
Carol? Jean?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Ted?
I don't have anything.
Mr. [inaudible]. So we'll end it.
Just an update on Frap Street. We should be, uh, finishing up the sidewalks this week. Uh, Monday, the county is, uh, going to be here to blacktop our roads. So, the line crew will be back on Chapman Street.
Thank you, sir.
Have you done the Maple Street yet? From Chapman to Maple, have you done that, both sections?
Chapman to Maple.
You mean sidewalk?
You mean, you mean put the underground?
Yeah, all the underground's done on the lower end. We're going to start doing the pushes across from Delaware Street to the tracks. Then we're going to start on the main trunk line and go up. We're just concentrating on putting cable, or the conduits in, so we can pull the cable in cold weather.
Great.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Vote for the, you're saying?
You're going to have Cody in the executive section, right?
Absolutely, and I want to thank Cody for being here for it.
All right. Uh, open you to the public at this time.
Uh, Tom Dar, fourteen Lilly Avenue. Um, I think it's very unfortunate that Village Rousen has come here tonight so steamed that he's making accusations, made one directed at the village administrator that she wasn't doing her job, and that something has apparently gotten out of hand, either they don't understand, or somebody else doesn't understand, or the lawyer, or, or whoever. But it's, all that does is that person's going to go out in the street now, and each one of you are going to get a bad name. And, um, we should be in a position in this village to be more accommodating and more, uh, more welcoming as we can. Now, I'm not saying what went wrong, and I'm not pointing anything here, I'm just saying it's very unfortunate that someone would have to come in here and get so steamed about it.